Good evening, I'd like to call the October 2nd, 2023 meeting of the Camden and Borse Selectment Order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are in meeting in the Board Selectment Office and broadcasting over Zoom, we are recording the meeting, is there anyone else recording the meeting? Don't see anyone. Don, I have to say, watched a few of our meetings, and boy, I wish the owl would not focus when we stamp at the Pledge of Allegiance, we're not looking good. I'm surprised people keep viewing after that, like, oh. Lauren, I'm putting you in charge of looking for a better flag option.
Right.
Okay? I think the leftover parade one, you and I might have picked it up at the fourth of July, we could do better, I think we can. All right. All right, first order of business is minutes. We have September 18th.
Dalton.
Dalton, he's recording?
Yes.
Okay.
Lauren, on the fiber optic part?
Yep.
We would bond for the whole thing, and it would start showing up on the tax rate, if we didn't have our target goal.
Okay.
The 50% take rate, so important that's noted in there.
Okay, thanks.
Maybe this will come up later, but when we talk about it later, that special town meeting, the annual town meeting, the audio was not good, you know, we had, we needed to figure out a system for getting a microphone out to the audience, or really direct them to come up to a mic. But that was something, you know, you and I watched the tape quite a bit, and it does put a strain on knowing what happened during it, so we should, Bob, if you can work on that with a moderator, Eva, whatever it takes, if the school has some equipment available, extra mics, that'd be great.
I noticed that-
Maybe the new setup you have-
They not only had the new system that we have, but they were using a mic system, a separate mic system as well. And I was wondering if our old mic system might work.
Well, I'm wondering if you take the new system from the mel-, from the auditorium, and put a couple of the pickup mics along the aisle, people can then come to them. I have to say, watching the last staff meeting, the audio pickup is impressive.
Yes.
You know, normally, you wouldn't hear the people on the front wall-
No, it's good.
And there was no problem. Same thing with the planning board meeting, everybody was audible.
Right.
So I think maybe bringing that system over.
Just gotta get that mic, that camera working.
It worked okay.
You think it'll work better than the one we have?
That spiral camera? Yeah, I know we're off topic from the minutes now, but it needs, the firmware needs to be updated for it to be able to work, from what I'm seeing.
So what were they using then, as part of the Zoom thing? So it was the old camera, but the new mics?
Where, during the staff meeting?
Staff meeting plus-
I don't think, I don't think the new camera setup is our old camera, or old-
That's right, it's, we're using the old camera and the new mics.
Okay.
Old camera and new mics, so it's off topic.
So, but again, it does go relevant too, we talked about special town meeting, we gotta make sure we're more, not the day of, but the week before, please.
Lauren, on the town treasurer, and then a couple art, a couple notes there where motions were made, I think it might be important just to have who seconded it.
Okay.
Motion made by, you know, so I moved to endorse the treasurer's recommendations, and then it was seconded by, I think, Selectman Davenport, and Paul voted in favor.
And I certainly know the adjourning motion was definitely Craig and Don. That spoiler play, you can put that in every time. They take turns about who makes the motion. Other than those minor corrections, how about the minutes? A little approval of the September 18th minutes with the corrections.
Second?
On paper? Good job, Lauren.
Thank you.
You should have, in your packet, you should have the tractor.
Next, we have Mark Langone, Highway Superintendent, Mark, how are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Well, we got through the summer, and now here we are in the fall.
Yes, we've been right along. Getting ready for snow already.
How's the salt shed?
Cold.
Is it?
The bids did come through, I sent a note out.
They're less?
I'm sorry?
It was less per ton?
About eight, I think it was eight dollars less a ton. And back to a vendor that we've been very comfortable with and have a great relationship with, so.
I know it's a little preemptive, but I mean, you're doing the sand for seniors again, I assume, and all that?
Yes.
You will, I mean, it's gonna come out.
Absolutely, the fire department is doing it.
But I mean, it's up in his area.
Absolutely, yeah, whatever we can do to help.
Yeah, because then now also we'll be open to residents to grab some too.
Always have, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so Mark, we have an article on the special town meeting, worn for a new tractor. I mean, that old one, my gosh, it must barely 40 years old, why is it failing?
It's a, it's a combination, it's a combination between the tractor and the sickle bar attachment. Either one's working and the other one isn't, type thing. We, and, and this has been going on for a couple of years, and we've been able to kind of piece things together, get it repaired, if, you know, if I've got extra money, been able to get it repaired and kind of limp it through the year. But we're not keeping up on the roadside mowing as much as I'd like to, so it, it kind of upsets me, I'd like to do a better job with that. The, the sickle bar attachment, I'm beginning to find that there are parts that we can't get for it, period. I've had companies do nationwide and worldwide searches for certain parts, and they're just, they're just not out there. I was able to get some, some parts through a company in Pennsylvania, and we were gonna kind of piece those together to try to, try to get us through another year, and no sooner did we get that back together, we started having issues with the transmission in, in the tractor. So like I said, it's, it's either one thing or another, it's been happening on and off for the last couple of years. I think it was 2019, I actually started putting the tractor on my radar, on my five-year capital projection sheet, and I've kind of increased that number 10% every year. And so, 2023, we're at roughly, I think it was 120 and changed, 20, last year would have been 109 and changed, so it's kind of, kind of close with that, but it just, it, it, it's turning, I'm sorry, it's turning into an unreliable piece of equipment that-
And I was joking, I said 40 years, but how old is that tractor?
It's a 99, so 24?
So I think this goes back, I think this goes back to Don, when my wife Lennis was chairman of parking rec, they actually got the old highway tractor at that time, and Dana went out and this is the tractor they bought-
Okay.
When they moved the, their tractor out, so 24 years, they got their money out of it.
So how is this one different? Those sickle bar, they do it, is it different now?
A little bit, yeah, it, yes, yes it is, so I brought a picture, and I can, I can hand this over to them, but it's a, it's a, it's a Kubota, but a little bit larger, enclosed cab with climate control, that way there, this machine can be out in the rain, it can be out in the snow, can be out in the 90, 90-degree weather, working. The attachment, the attachment is really what I was after, and this attachment is made, it's called a Terrain King, it's made by Alamo Industries, you've probably heard of that, Alamo, Alamo makes a variety of mowing attachments or whatever for, for tractors. They have the, they have exclusive permission from Kubota to mount these implements on Kubota tractors.
So is it similar to the flail you have on the other machine, or?
It's similar in that, and I'll, and I'll give you the picture, it's similar in that, it's the same concept, it's a, instead of a sickle, instead of a rotary, it's, it's a drum, and you'll see on the picture here-
Those ones they use now, that is like, go down, they like brush hogs on them?
Yes, but this one will be, it comes in three sizes, a 60-inch, a 74-inch, and then a, I think, an 80-inch. I had priced the middle of the line one, and I think I could probably save a little bit of money if we went with the, the five-foot one, plus it wouldn't put us so far out in the road. The other reason was safety, safety and licenses. Now, when you get into a tractor with a boom, a mowing arm with a, with a boom attachment, now everybody who runs it has to go and get a, a special endorsement on their hoister's license, which I think it's a 4G. I want all these guys to be able to run this thing, even part-time, even part-time help, I mean, it's, it's easy, it's very visible, so when you're, you know, you're not kind of turned watching an arm cut, like you might have seen in other, other towns, this one, you've got great visibility, you're looking down, kind of like this, you still can have one eye on the road, and it, it just kind of floats, and it does, yeah, so it's like a drum with teeth on it.
It's articulating, right?
And it, it does, it just raises up and down, this way, and it does have a curb height, piston, adjustment, height adjustment, but it does not have like the over-the-guardrail boom or any, anything like that.
Not that much like the flail, it's just more-
Correct, but it's still the flail concept, so I'll, I'll just, it's the one that I circled, yes.
Oh, yeah.
And actually-
So you said, I don't know what you said, you said 120, but I probably read that 108.
No, I'm sorry, in my projection, in my five-year projection, it was, I had it up to 120 this, this, this year.
So between the 108, potential trading perhaps, or selling the old for something, and then if you did drop down to the 60-inch, would that drop another thousand or a couple thousand?
Yeah, at least, at least. I was actually very surprised at the, the price of the attachment, but when I heard what a neighboring town has to replace their over-the-guardrail boom, mid-mountain boom attachment, it was over 100,000.
That's good.
Yeah, so it's like, all right, well, that doesn't sound so bad, but-
That's what he was on all the state roads half the time, you see him out there.
Right, and just everything is, is, is expensive, and, but I feel like, you know, the other thing too is, you know, with something like this, we, through, in time, we can purchase other attachments for it, rear attachments, whether it be, I brought an example, like a, like, I would like to look at one of these, it's, it's like a Buffalo blower, doesn't have to be that model, but something like that would help out tremendously in the fall, on the leaves blowing off.
I think.
They're, they make rear-mounted snow blowers, brooms, like sweepers, so there are some of those.
I think the big question is, I don't think anyone doubts the fact that you need this, you know?
Okay, yeah.
Just like you needed a dump truck and things like that, the timing is kind of the question, I think Craig's point at the last meeting, that we need to be more flexible in how we respond and buy things, and that's what these kind of meetings go to.
Right.
You and I talked about delivery being a big impact, and I think we talked at our last meeting, similar to what we felt with the excavator a couple of years ago. Tell us about the delivery on a piece like this.
So that's an excellent point, too. The tractor itself is about three to four months out, once upon order, the actually implement, the, the flail attachment is six months out, at least, in which case they would probably just hold the tractor, or just time it so that when they get everything in, they'll, they'll put it together, so I think either way-
Well, if we got it then at the special town meeting, technically you can order it the day after, on November 1st, you're projecting you might get it by May, complete, maybe earlier, maybe a little later, but roughly six months out.
Correct, yes.
If we waited till the annual town meeting, which is in May, but effectively purchasing is July 1st-
That would-
You would lose the whole year.
Correct, yes I would.
You wouldn't be getting that, the things for the end of the year.
And I, yeah, and I-
And you may have to say, look, I'm gonna have to go through all 2024 with a tractor that may or may not work, or rent something, or job that, and spend more money.
And I did-
And I think that was the argument, Don made that argument then, like, it's just kind of productive to spend that kind of money, you're throwing it away rather than buying.
A rental with a machine comparable is 2,500 a week, so that's-
Right.
That could get pricey over the course of a few months.
Right, yeah, over the course of the mowing season, right?
Sure, and I, you know, and I even like to do-
25 grand, oh my gosh.
Yeah, and of course, you know, we wouldn't, if we were renting, we would cut that cheese, season as short as possible, but typically, you know, I'd like to, to do two rounds, I'd do a round in, starting in the spring, kind of cut everything back, and then again in the fall before winter, like to just go through and at least hit the main roads in, in any problem areas. And that's what we've been doing now with the, with the mini excavator, with the flail attachment, is just kind of bouncing around, hitting problem areas, areas with visibility issues, or, you know, whatever, and just trying to keep up that way, but that's not what we purchased that machine for.
No, it isn't, I have to say, driving around town, and I don't want to call up different roads, but I see roads, I'm like, oh my gosh, you definitely need to cut back on this, where the stuff is overhanging onto the road.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would say the worst case is probably across on Allen Street, across from St. Patrick's, on the right-hand side, Eddie Bush comes out halfway into the lane.
Allen Street?
In Springfield, across the-
Oh.
Or I mean-
St. Patrick's.
Only town, yeah.
Yeah, there's-
That's the one that's, yeah.
I just, I, you know, I think it looks nice, I think, you know, if we can keep up with it, and, and that's what I plan on doing, and-
Does this have to be registered, as a large machinery for rotors?
I believe it does.
Does our current tractor, is it registered?
It has plates, yes.
So it wouldn't be increasing the cost, you'd be flipping from one to the other.
Correct.
Okay. I just think, and like I said, it was a good point being brought up, be prepared to, pretty much give the same, I don't wanna call it an argument, it's not an argument, it's an explanation.
Sure.
This is why we're doing it.
Okay.
I think the part you make about the fact that if we waited till the spring, we would lose the entire use of it next year.
Right.
And potentially paying the rental cost, that makes no sense to throw that money away.
Right, right.
And for an item that last time you got, shoot, almost 25 years out of the tractor you got last time.
Sure.
And I'm not saying this is this, this much, but this isn't a frivolous purchase, this is where you need to get the job done.
And, and all the extras that we could potentially add to it in the future, to just, to just help, you can, however, they are, they are in the process of coming up with a conversion kit to be able to mount certain front-end attachments, they don't have it yet, they're not even sure if, or when it happens, it's not a matter of if, but when it happens, if it'll be retroactive, so.
Would this be the type of thing, say we did that sidewalk project, would this be the type of thing that would have a snow blower on the front, and you could do, because Bob's saying they have to be five foot now.
Yeah, yeah, that, I'll have to look into, the only problem is that, oh, there is a front-mounted, and this is, this is the whole problem with, with this, the front implements on these machines, is there's a, if you notice, there's a front hydraulic system, your tank and your pumps, everything.
Always got a block on the front, on the side.
Yeah, so that's why you wouldn't be able to put, I'm sorry, loader arms on it right now, they're trying to redesign everything, and make a, make a kit for it.
I was just saying that, that type of thing, you know, Bob has made the point that, that kind of width, that seems like the right implement for it.
I was interested in one of these brush, these brush attachments that are slanted, you down the sidewalk, and would brush, brush the side, brush the snow off the sidewalk.
Correct, and the only thing is, they do make those in the rear mount, snow blower and, and brush, the only thing is, you'd have to be kind of going backwards and having somebody spot you, but-
I think this tractor is a little bit bigger than, yeah, sidewalk size.
Is it? Okay. All right. You know what, if you could, Craig brought that up, try and get those kind of pictures over to Bob, so if we wanted to throw them up on the screen during the special town meeting.
Okay.
They'd have them there.
Absolutely.
Maybe a live action shot, doing a video of it, driving up and down the road.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
Craig with the drone over, and you know, waving.
One of us waving out of here.
Serious radio, what?
Taking it on the parade.
Yeah.
You might get some, you might get some more Chapter 90 money.
I didn't hear that yet.
I didn't either, no, really.
Was that gonna be like another round of maybe the winter, or, or before winter?
No, this is, they, there's a bonding bill, and there's $25 million in it for towns that have less than 5,000 people, and have less than 500 people per square mile. We have 263 people per square mile, so we should be eligible for some money at some point.
Okay.
Yeah, where's our, where's our sidewalk money, how's that coming?
Well, they, they did actually pass this bond bill, so.
This one passed?
Yeah.
Well, this one passed too.
Well, this one passed too, they just didn't, they didn't fund it, that's all.
Well, I just talked today to our, our state aid engineer, they haven't even posted our allotments yet.
Oh.
They voted on it, and it's been signed, but-
You're in the range of, what, 256, something like that?
Yeah, around 250, yeah.
Oh, so talk about, so Wednesday, you have another chapter in the bridge saga.
Yes, and I think I did forward the invitation to anybody that was interested to meet out on Rocket Dundee Road Bridge for, it didn't, the invitation didn't really say what, what we were looking at, but I think it'd be a good, I'm definitely gonna go and just kind of-
2 o'clock, Rocket Dundee Bridge.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Dalton, you wanna be there again? I know you visited once.
I think tomorrow, too, you're meeting with Carmody Road, at 10 o'clock.
Yes, I'll be there for that, too.
That was the email I poured about, yeah, thank you. I took a ride over there over the weekend, and the water's right on roadside edge.
That's why I thought it's important, you'll be there as well, yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, so, back up in the 80s on Wednesday, jeez.
Open pool, back up.
Don't go crazy, I know. All right, anything more for us?
Uh, I guess, I mean, if I can, I don't know how much time you have, I could maybe just update on the road, road projects, or anything else that you, you'd like me to-
Five minutes.
Five minutes? Okay, so, looking to have, I'd say, the majority of our road projects done this year, we're currently replacing all the catch basin tops on Hillside, Highland Circle and Hillside Drive, when that, they've taken a beating throughout the years, because when they, when they put that development in, they use Cape Cod berm, but then they use regular 8-inch backed Connecticut tops, and, you know, all of them are either broken or sheared off, and I think this'll give it a better look, so what we've done is ordered, they make actual Cape Cod Connecticut top catch basin tops.
So the plow will ride pretty much the whole way through.
Sure, sure, so we're in the process of doing that, we're completing about two a day, which is, which is good, I'm hoping to have that done in time, but we may end up doing Highland and Hillside in the spring. It's been, and the, and the weather hasn't been helping.
I feel the rain hasn't been helping.
But everything else is ready to go, I've been in contact with, with our contractor, and he's ready to go, and seems very easy to, to work with, so I'm excited to, to work with him.
And that's a new place, Precise?
Precise, yeah, new to us, they've been around for a while, but very highly recommended, they do excellent work, and, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm excited to work with them.
Okay, other projects, you had South Ridge.
South Ridge, we had a section of Mountain Road, Isaac Bradway for a mill and pave, and then a section of North Road as well, and-
Any of those this year, or the all next year?
No, I'm, I'm, they're all ready to go this year, the only ones that aren't, unfortunately, are Hillside and Highland, because of the, replacing the tops.
So the ones just overlays?
Overlays and mills, a couple mills and a couple overlays, yeah, so, and I wasn't kidding about getting ready for winter, so we're going through the plows in our spare time and on rainy days, and-
Okay, my quick thought, let me talk about our projects.
Yeah.
The North Road.
Yeah.
When is that scheduled, 'cause I'm thinking about the 2 o'clock cluster, you know, out there.
I, I don't have a scheduled date and time, but I will certainly take that into consideration.
I gotta say, you gotta notify the school a week ahead of time, because they're gonna have to, that's gonna really impact.
Yeah, absolutely, drop off morning and afternoon, it's free, okay.
I don't even wanna say, can we restrict the construction time to after drop off and before pick up?
That's an excellent, that's a good point, so I, I may even see if we've got a day off or something, and the contractor doesn't, and I don't know, we'll-
That might be something, sure.
I don't, I don't roll the counter off, yeah.
Yeah, with a professional staff there, or something like that, yeah.
Okay.
They're still down there, but usually there's half days, like Wednesday's a professional development day, it's a half day.
Okay.
Stop and see Sharon.
Come on, stay, nobody works-
Sharon might be able to help you with that, yeah.
She's in-
Principal.
Oh, oh, the principal, okay, okay, absolutely, yeah, that could get messy.
Yeah, I think, bad enough with the road the way it is, and all of a sudden you got them paving the other half of it, and like, I can't even think, that would be.
They probably wouldn't do evening paving, right, nighttime paving, they don't do that on here.
I could ask, I don't know, I could ask, there'd have to be some-
Pretty dark road, geez.
Yeah, and there'd have to be-
I think they're gonna light this up on your corner, and one of the school, and Mary doesn't mind her driveway.
Other than that, just working on, on a couple of Beaver issues in town, and, like I said, getting ready for, for snow season.
Okay, well, Don had asked about an update on the Beaver thing, I think we'll know more after tomorrow, I think Finn can come back next week and really, after you have your little-
Good next week.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And we've been, so we've been also, I've been working with the Trapper on coming up with a plant for, for Glendale and Ridge, so aside from Carmody, that's, that I'm aware of, Glendale, Glendale and Ridge are, is the only other area that's affecting the, the town, or the town infrastructure anyway, so decided to wait until the season starts on that location, however, we're gonna move forward, I spoke to him, we're gonna move forward on an early start on Carmody Road, just because of the circumstances.
I'd say one last thing, that, they got a ride around town yesterday, and we went up and down Chapin Road, which goes back to your cleaning thing, 'cause they have a heck of a ditch on the west side of the road.
Correct.
But going over the top and down the way, I think we went over three little bridges, those are the hidden ones you talk about.
Oh, yeah.
That people see, oh my gosh, yeah, there's Mill Road, there's Laughing Brook, but all these little culverts that are around, every, everything needs maintenance, you know, and you don't realize that here's, you know, 16 feet of guard rail.
Sure.
But it represents, there's a culvert over there that needs somebody to look at.
Absolutely, and we do, and we do look at them, at least annually.
Sure.
But we were up there not long ago, cutting the banks of the, of the drainage ditches, and while we were there, we, we checked out the culverts always, you know, and whenever we end up with rain, like we did last week, or something like that, you know, we go out and kind of monitor catch basins, culverts, and stuff like that.
You know, a good thing it might do, it might scour it through, actually just do some cleaning.
It does, it does help clean, clean it out.
As long as it doesn't erode the base underneath.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we beat you up enough, by the way.
No, that's fine, thank you very much.
Any more questions, guys? John?
Goodness.
Very nice.
Oh, thank you, thanks, Mark.
He'll call you later, he's got-
That's all right. Thank you very much, have a good night.
You too. Back to the discussion on health coordinator, last we met, we had asked to have identification of the different roles, like different H, or whichever, do we have-
So you should have in your packet-
Yep.
An update that Jane and I put together, which labels in red, whether a particular function is port of health, facilities, they also put in there operations when it's not facilities, like at the bottom there, and in doing that, on the second page too, what I noticed is that most of the activities can be classified as BOH. And looking at what we have for budgets, looking at what we need to do before Jane leaves. Uh, the only thing I think, think of that will work, given the constraints that we have, would be to assign some of these functions to a permanent town administrator. You're gonna have somebody for thirty-five or forty hours. Uh, some of that can be shifted. I don't know any other way, huh?
A lot of the facility stuff, your operations stuff.
Yeah, operation stuff. And then we can't create two jobs at this point.
That person can always delegate too.
Yeah, I mean, let's say, I don't know. We, we don't have the capacity to create two jobs. We have the person who has kind of had an accumulation of some functions over the years. Um, I don't know how you recruit somebody to do the jobs that, the two or three different types of jobs that Jane's been doing. I think you're just gonna have to get somebody for a limited number of hours for the Board of Health. And then, at least temporarily, assign some of these other functions to the administrator. I don't know of any other situation other than um, hiring somebody, which is not gonna be feasible in time for Jane's retirement.
Water District supports that, really Board of Health or, or operations person? I mean, I can see it morphed there, but I really wouldn't have called it Board of Health. She does it, but I know.
She does the billing, well.
If it's a functional board of health.
Yeah, well, like well testing and stuff like that, so that's, that's health related, you know.
But um. She sets up a lot of those appointments and stuff for it. So Bob, would you say, so we're, we're looking at here, would you, we're gonna post for the Board of Health Coordinator, so you would just post those Board of Health things as?
Uh, we probably should go back over it carefully. Uh, we did this uh, this afternoon. Uh, but then, if we're going to post, we should post for just Board of Health functions. And I would adjust this and uh, see what we can do.
Now, what about the emergency management stuff? A few things on here, I think we could, we could shift to some of that as well.
I think that goes back to the whole thing I've been saying, is we need somebody dedicated to be the point person for emergency management. You know, you need that, that one designee, whether that's the um, the POI or the point person or the immediate reception, reception person. But somebody's gotta be, you know, whether it's within the Board of Selectmen or however we wanna deal with that, but we're, we're lacking that, so that, that could shift.
Well, there's still some time available, but.
Well, the next question is, so we have a job that's taking this much hours. You're sitting here.
She was thirty-nine hours, now she's thirty-five.
I understand that, but the thirty-five is reflective of this, which is, now, Don, throw a number there. Eighty percent Board of Health and twenty percent other stuff.
About that, yeah.
So, but the reality is, I think, I think all of that, that more than thirty-five hours are being put in. So, do we keep the Board of Health at thirty-five hours? Because really, if you got somebody new who doesn't have the dedication that Jane has, they're gonna need all that time to do the Board of Health.
I think you do.
I think you do.
When you look up the permitting, when you look up, you know, old plans, people coming in, asking for old plot plans or aesthetic designs, I mean, some of that stuff Jane knows just like that.
Yeah.
But you know, people, people are gonna have to.
Learn all that stuff, right?
Yeah, write them through files, search them.
Yeah, I think you keep that thirty-five. You just do it to Board of Health and then figure out the other stuff later on.
Right.
Well, if you're all agreeable, we'll, we'll get that done, get it out there. And uh, because there's gonna be significant training.
Yeah, I think the sooner we get it out there, the sooner we can bring somebody on to shadow the responsibilities.
Exactly. The other.
So are we parsing this down then?
Just Board of Health stuff.
Board of Health, or anything that's dual, the last one, Board of Health.
But um, in, in talking about that, I really think at some point we should start talking about emergency management a little more, yeah, I think that's important.
And the other thing in your packet is um, proposal for executive search.
Right.
I'm going to receive another one. The two public sector executive search firms that do most of the work in Massachusetts are Community Paradigm uh, and Collins.
Are they the people that came to see us before? Collins?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they wanted to do that study, wasn't it?
Collins also did the HR study.
I know, it's just funny. The two groups you had come in last time, and you knew both of them. You know, and they, you saw the, the list of places they've worked with. They both had East La Medo down. Cause one hired the lady before Mary.
Yeah.
So it's, I'm gonna say incestuous, but they all get it out there, yeah.
Uh, there's a third firm that operates on the Cape. But uh, I don't know how practical that would be. There's a fourth firm that operates out of New Hampshire, but they don't do that much business in Massachusetts. Prices have gone up.
Twelve-five?
But I was a, a bit surprised at, at that. I mean, what some communities do, frankly, is that they do a search themselves. And if that fails, do a search with a firm.
So we're waiting for the other.
The whip shakes out is this, if you advertised, uh, you get those who read and respond to ads. What the search firm will bring to you is that they know who's who, who's looking to move, uh, who, you know, unhappy where they are, who's not getting renewed, who's this and who's that? Because they go through all the meetings of the Mass Municipal Association, they talk to people. And so, they're able to do outreach for the town in addition to doing the advertising. And they also, you'll notice when they read through this, they, they boast that they're able to do a good match.
They can see what their success rate is of matches, that you're saying?
They do a good match and they'll also tell you how many of their recent uh, selections are still with the town.
Right, I think that's important.
Those are important. I mean, I think you want somebody who's gonna be, a lot of the problems of municipalities can't be resolved quickly. They, you need long-term efforts to deal with some of the problems.
I do like the fact they showed their last five years here on page twenty-five.
Yes.
And they said, all recruitments listed were successfully completed with two exceptions out of, what are they? Thirty, forty on the page? It's pretty impressive.
Well, with, with this guy, it's Bernie Lynch, who is a retired.
Fairhaven?
Town city admin, uh, manager. His last uh, position was he was a city manager at Lowell. And then he went off and established this firm. Uh, I was in Beckett when he, when he was brought in.
He was big old good there.
Sorry, we're looking at the, they didn't succeed in Fairhaven. And we're reading the description there. One select board member had to recuse himself and the other two each voted for a different finalist resulting in one-one vote until one board member was recalled by the poll or something. I don't think the biggest problem is missing a manager. I don't know if anybody wanted that job, right?
His first effort in Beckett failed. They didn't get any candidates that the selectman liked. He didn't just say, okay, I'm done. I've done what you wanted me to do. I've brought you the candidates and you gotta pay me more. No, he, he went back a second time. And without an additional charge, went through the process again and found somebody who the selectman agreed to. And I, and I, I think Collins does very similar work. I mean, it's not.
I mean, how much legwork is there for twelve-five? Do you think it's, I mean, do they put all things, so they go to every meeting? They have their, their fingers in the community?
What they'll do is do a community profile.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll come and interview you and say, well, who are you looking for? What strengths are you looking for? Uh, what does someone who takes over here have to know how to do? And, and uh, then they write out a community folder, basically. Uh, digitize it and anyone who expresses an interest, they send it to. Uh, and I think the, most of the work comes down to winnowing candidates and checking references.
So they have the experience embedding and?
Yes, and reference checking is really tough because everybody's afraid of being sued. And so if I get a call for a reference for someone I've known, I don't say much.
No.
And, and so they have to know how to pull it out of you.
And I'm sure they've gotten calls from people who in jobs right now. You know, hey Bernie, just to let you know, if you get an inquiry from somebody, you know, no, no. Not specifically, but I'm interested.
Yeah.
So they have a list of ten to twelve names that are looking for.
They do.
New Horizons.
Yep, they know, they know who's who. And they know who's looking.
Yeah.
Or who's unhappy or.
And you said twelve-five.
Gonna retire where and.
What do you think the other one will be? Paul or, I'm sure they all are.
I kinda thought, I kinda thought that they're a bit higher than I've been accustomed to in the past, but uh, I have no idea. I did talk with, I called them last week and uh, didn't get a response. So I called Mary Ikari, who did our HR study, and said, plug me into the right person, and she did that. And so we'll get something soon.
What's our funding source look like? Do we have enough in budget for this? Or are we gonna put it on the warrant?
Well, we'd have enough in temp help. We could have enough.
We have enough in temp.
Will that, will that handicap us though if we wanna, you know, hire somebody to come out early for Board of Health?
Well, I think if we decide to go ahead with increasing the administrator's salary, we'd have it out there. The question is, is it appropriate, take it from that line item, what Bob doesn't have.
No, it's not, it's an expense.
What you don't have in your line item, we don't have a town administrator expense line.
Correct.
And we're always like lumping in with selectmen office expenses, you know.
Well, it could be put into selectmen expense too, but it had, a contract like this would have to come out of the expense section, not the salary section.
And we were funded at fifteen in expense and twelve in temp help. So, here we are, five seconds away from closing the warrant that we did. Any grants? Mr. Grantmeister?
Stop for this.
Yeah, I hate to throw it out there, but Harpa, can that be used?
I don't wanna tuck it out, you need every dollar.
Yeah. It can be used, but you know, the water project, I think is clearly a priority, so.
Well, you know what, maybe we should craft another warrant article and because we're, we're gonna go to the town meeting and we're gonna say, we want thirty thousand dollars more for salary. Why do you want thirty thousand dollars more salary? Because we want twelve thousand five hundred for the town administrator search. You know, that's what we're doing, so.
So, and can we, can we add on a line item there?
Well, I was just gonna say, do you wanna divide that in half and say, we're gonna have fifteen in the salary and fifteen for the search, or?
Well, yeah, but then, but we'd have to, we can set up an expense line item or put it into the selectmen's line item or expenses.
Rather make it a line, that probably, if it was the annual, I would agree with you, let's make it a measure expense line.
Right.
But let's add it to our expense line.
Let's add to our, it is your expense, it's not the town administrator.
Right, exactly. Uh, but we need it to be a separate article. I've never really seen increases through two articles in the same mo, two line items in the same motion.
You gotta probably make a separate article so they'll know what we're doing, right?
Can we up to twenty?
Twenty, I think.
No, no, how many articles we have to go with?
We're getting there.
Eighteen and a half?
Well, maybe we can, maybe we can take off the two thousand dollars for the.
Were you gonna answer back on the rifles? I know it's, we're a little ahead here, but.
Yes. Uh, I spoke with the accountant today. And his recommendation is to take it from the police equipment budget. And any shortfall, we will cover at the end of the year.
Okay, I agree with Don. This goes back to, and I had a brief conversation with the chief at the event over the weekend. We got half the cruiser money from that detail file. So in this, well, I think they sweep it every year. They don't. They couldn't have had thirty thousand if they were sweeping on a yearly basis. And that was two years ago or three?
Two or three years ago.
So they've accumulated more since then, certainly enough to cover honestly all the rifles, even if it was the one that broke and went or whatever and do, so. Are we getting, so is the chief saying he's comfortable with Cliff's call and we're taking off the warrant?
In fact, I saw him today, we talked about it.
Okay. Replace that article with a increase in the expense line? Right. Okay.
Yeah, I think we need to, because we have to fund that.
Now, we, let's not lock in a number, cause you don't know what the second quote's gonna be. You know, you might say, we're gonna hear from the second people and they want seventeen.
Yeah.
And then we gotta choose between them.
Yeah.
Thought that we couldn't do just fifteen and say, well, cover the shortfall, we got some money in there, you know. Worst case, I would say right now we're looking at worst case fifteen. And if it goes over, I mean, there's still fifteen thousand in the account.
How long is their, rolls a good for?
Uh, we haven't discussed it. I got this by way of email. I talked with him on the phone. And he sent it, I talked to him last week on the phone and he sent it, it arrived. I saw it today, I guess.
Okay. All right, so Bob was reporting then that he got one firm back home, he's waiting for the second back and then we'll talk about it more next week. Hopefully you'll have both for us.
Yes, I will, I'm sure. In fact, I, I would anticipate at the latest we would get the proposal, cause it's boilerplate stuff.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, not drafting the thing from scratch.
These two companies are probably having breakfast together every morning. They all know each other. All right. Anyone wanna talk about the warrant?
Yeah.
On the warrant, I mentioned
Just for.
Earlier that I added the two.
On that twelve-five, it does say, you know, any advertising listing, unusual printing copies are gonna go on top of this. So I mean, you could look, probably look at a couple hundred dollars more or a thousand dollars depending on those paper ads.
By the way, there are, there's some negotiation that goes on too.
Right, I'm just saying, you know, it's disclosed here that.
Yeah, the MMA ad.
Yeah.
Would be.
Silky. I would just say, I'm looking at the, you know, when we had the Republican, our, our, our stuff in the Republican, it was pretty expensive for those.
It would be, yeah. I don't know anyone who
When do you get the beavers?
Does this kind of work.
Yeah.
Who doesn't consult the ICMA website.
Yeah.
And the MMA website. That's effectively more than print, that's where people who are looking for jobs will consult, so.
Is this on the one drive or on laser fish?
Yes.
Okay.
Both?
It is, yes.
Nice. And it could be, would have been on his desk, but that thing is so clingy according to the pictures he showed.
Actually, it's not as clean as I said it was. I told them that, I anticipate that it'll be this clean by the next time we meet.
Well, that picture you showed in the staff meeting was like, yeah, don't open the closet door.
That was aspirational.
Yeah, Trevor McGee, don't open the closet. Before your time done. All right, so we have the warrant again. Uh, we have, we covered these in depth last week. Is there any one specific you wanna bring up, Don or Craig? I mean, and not the, I appreciate, you know, the motion part, these are projected motions, we're not worried about that at this point.
This is not.
This is more a question of articles.
We will post a clean.
Yeah, but more like an article.
So Article four, I mean, you think we can't come up with two thousand bucks by the end of the year?
We can, what?
Well, it's for two thousand dollars.
Right, but the price one was more than we figured.
Right, so, but I'm just saying, you don't think we can come up with two thousand dollars by the end of the year?
I'm sure we can.
Transfer.
I'm sure with that we can pull out of temp help.
But I, but I mean, I.
I'm saying, can we cover it line to line transfer in May rather than, you know, asking?
It's just such a small amount, I think it's kinda like.
I think, yeah, I think you're right.
Okay.
You know, take it off, take it off.
Okay, Mark's bullish. You know that part? You know that part? And don't look at that part.
Animal control, we're gonna kind of weigh in Beaver's solution there still, right? There might be more in there.
Okay, so you got a couple more. So Connie was in to flesh out, we, Doug is still not scheduled when the meeting is going to be, but right now we have.
This one's silky too.
Yeah, I'm saying, you know, where are you getting this paper?
This is high, high weight.
I didn't.
Heavy weight paper?
This was printed on the big machine. I didn't, I didn't put the paper in, so I don't know.
I'm just telling you, we buy a bit of paper for our stuff and it's not this good, so.
Doesn't make my hands feel dry.
All right, so.
That's what I like about it.
So we have, we have two items here. One would put a fence around and the second one would rehabilitate the fire escape.
What number is that?
Where?
Oh, yeah, five.
I will tell you, and I was a little. Let me look at this again. Why is this going to line twelve point four? Isn't there an academy hall line? Yes.
Well, I didn't know that, who would, who would control the project if it went to academy?
I don't think it would go under selectmen expenses. I mean, I thought, isn't there academy hall maintenance?
But you're go, but who controls that?
Well, we approve the bills along with the historical, but I mean, which all there for a purpose, but I wouldn't put it on our expense. I put it on our academy hall maintenance, all of them.
Yeah.
So Connie got, got quotes for this already?
Yes, and those two handouts that I gave you.
Kind of like the animal control thing, kind of goes to the same point that we can't, okay, it would be a shortfall, but it's such a small amount and Cliff is so good at finding a way to transfer. Especially since it really comes under the police budget, the one point something where you know, they can't find eight hundred dollars. I would suggest the board remove that article too.
What about the beaver still?
Which one we?
Well, right now, we're only asking for eight hundred.
What do you think, I didn't have the report yet from Finn. He's coming in next week. I thought I would make an adjustment in the amount based on the number of deceivers that we have to put in.
Why don't we leave it in there and if we choose not to take action on it?
Pull it out next week. Yeah, you could, well, you could pull it out next week too because you're not gonna sign it tonight.
Right, that's true.
The Natchoglan Trust thing is still with town council.
Yeah.
We've been through the tractor, brush truck.
I would, but I'm just, we're both good with the land trust thing is what it is.
Yeah, it is.
Second half of the other thing and the tractor, we're comfortable with now.
Dr. Brothers.
Can we get fibs?
I think it was a good explanation, Mark did. He brings that forward, it makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Especially delivery.
I'm gonna back up a little bit and go back to the CPC order posts.
Yeah.
I understand the fire escape, what's this fence for?
Remember we did our thing in the, the entrance to the underneath thing? She wanted to put a fence along so people wouldn't fall over the sides into the.
Where the stones are.
The stone wall, basically.
Okay, which, thirty-three hundred dollars for a couple of metal fences that cover off the.
There's a little bit of an explanation in, in what she handed out.
It's your high quality fences, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, I will say, at the point that, you know, heck, I live next to our academy hall, our first house in town, but.
Have you ever fallen off that ledge?
Nobody ever has.
It's only like, what, two and a half feet though?
Uh, no, it's, no, I mean, it's a full height of the door, yeah. So if you're close to the building, it's eight to ten feet, yeah. So.
Okay.
Look, there are people that drive over little embankments all the time, right?
Guy went over the, guy went over the dump? The funny part is.
Turn right now.
The funny part is they tell me, yeah, the last time he did it, we just lifted him off, but we couldn't just.
He was wedged on there pretty good.
Yeah. Okay, brush truck, you spelled the parking wrong, Bob.
I'm gonna blame it on the spell check.
All right, so do we want to ask the chief to come in and review our presentation?
Well, I got a couple of questions about.
I know you got some, you've got some detail from Lauren today. Part of the paperwork backup.
Yeah, I got the paperwork, but here's, here's the issue that I think we need to resolve. The grant was given to the Hammond Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated, which is a separate, private organization apart from the town. It wasn't given to the town.
But that's what they gave it the last one. We bought that truck, gosh, it was twelve years ago, Mike. We got a nice check from the government. Richie even came and brought us the fake check thing that was also given to.
It went to the Hammond, the Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated?
Yeah.
So how did the town get the, where? Did the Hammond Volunteer Fire Department give it to the town or donate it or?
Good question.
So it's like giving it to the friends of and then trying to disperse the money from there?
I would imagine every, we should go back, I'd like to see, appreciate this, go back to the last couple FEMA grants. This is not our first one and see how they dispersed it in the past. Because it might be a bit of a paperwork struggle to get the check from here to here, yeah.
You know, if, if they buy the truck and they send it to, I don't, I wanna, I don't know how they buy the truck. Do they just send the bill to FEMA or do, does, do we buy the, does the town buy the truck and then reimbursed?
Well, we did ask him about that, are we gonna be reimbursed or whatever? And I thought he said no, goes whatever. Re, like I said, researched the last couple of FEMA ones. I'm pretty sure there was something in that.
But I am concerned about.
I don't want to be like the state where it doesn't pay us for a year and a half.
Yeah, well, I am concerned it's, it's, it's to this private, you know, quote, private organization. And I don't want to screw up the paperwork and not get the truck.
Right, right. Can't afford to paint it.
Because the town buys the truck, money's coming from the town account, right?
Yeah, but they did say the last time, they wasn't, I thought they said they wrote the check, they're part of the check and we weren't funding the money.
FEMA.
Right.
And then the town is responsible for the difference.
Which, if they're gonna pay the face directly, then we don't care what organization technically got the money.
So you never remember.
If they're writing their part of the check directly to, I remember the name, Baldard, whatever the company is.
Firefighter trucks.
But then, let's, let's say they write the check to, to the Hammond Volunteer, write the, write the check, they write the check right to the company on behalf of the Hammond Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated. Do they own the truck? They purchased the truck. Do they own it? Do they didn't have to donate it to the town or do we buy it for a buck or do you ever remember, Don, them presenting a check to the board of selectmen and accepting the gift from the volunteer?
Not from the fire department, like I said, we had a, one type of thing where, oh gosh, like I said, Richie came with one of those four foot checks and we had a big presentation up at the fire station and stuff like that.
I mean, that's how Parks and Rec does it.
Right.
And so they got their, their mower was through.
And I also made the point where.
Parks and Rec got their mower out?
I'm trying to remember, it was, or maybe it was the mower, it was something else where Raw raised the money and then donated it to Parks and Rec. I think is how it worked, right?
Just like, it makes sense, right?
So you have to call something like that.
It also might be, okay, I'm Company A. You come to me and say, hey, I want to buy this thing here. That company's not gonna care per se.
Where they get the money.
Right, exactly. You know, four guys named Vito show up with bags, like, hey, Don's still getting the car. So it might not be, that might not be a thing. So where's the title going is kind of the question.
Right, exactly.
You know, I'd like, research how we've done in the past and I think that's how it works. But do we want to ask them to, just like we had Mark in, let's lock down the presentation thing if they have time next week?
I like, maybe they have the answer to this, I don't know.
Could be. I mean, obviously we'll see the same thing the night of the.
I mean.
No, the advisory hearing.
Oh, right.
The practice then. That is another question. And the advisory hearing is the week before. I was hoping to go to the minute, the, we're gonna have a town meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. But that'll be the same time and they only have five articles.
Okay, the other, the other issue I have, but that is line fifty-three point four.
Why are we putting on a budget? Oh, no.
That, well, they have line fifty-three point four is equipment budget. And the chief told me that that's only for turnout gear.
Right, for a thing like this, we would not, this is a warrant article, just that special warrant line. Like when we bought the dump truck, like when we buy the extra cruiser, not the regular cruiser. I mean, this is just a warrant article.
Well, I can appreciate that the chief would say that, you know, that's only for turnout equipment, but I thought at the last meeting, we wanted to make sure we had line item references.
We do, for regular, for regular things, but this would be such an extraordinary expense, it would skew the numbers.
Skew the budget, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be like putting the dump truck in Mark's budget, yeah.
And then, then the.
He'd like it.
Yeah, I know, I'm familiar with that. And the challenge is next year, you gotta go back, back to that budget and pull out those things that have been added in, so.
And the other thing is, we, the wording is, it says as the local match, but it's not the local match. The local match was ten thousand nine hundred sixty-two.
Right.
So this has to be worded some way, additional equipment or additional accoutrements or?
For the purchase of a brush truck, basically. Basically, it's, for the purchase of a brush truck, comma, of which twenty-nine, two hundred nineteen thousand blah blah from, was funded by a FEMA grant and ten thousand by town meeting, town meeting action in May twenty twenty-three, yeah.
Something like that.
Put the whole thing in there. And those three things together add up to, boom, the cost of the truck.
The other thing I want to.
It's like, you go back to your point, the ten thousand we passed in May was not a line item. It was just a match, right, wonderful, yeah.
So we gotta figure out this about the.
Sorry, it'll look like the train left again.
The related areas, what we got? Police department rifles were taken out?
Yes. Uh, February, the AEDs were staying in. What are you gonna do?
Yeah, so Article eleven goes out.
All right, ten is in, eleven out. Master plan.
Master plan.
Well, I know it's a subject of controversy, but the planning board voted to ask for it to be on the warrant, so.
They did.
They're working. Um, I would say again, this goes back, and I appreciate your point about the line items. This would not be a line item. Okay. Gonna hear a report, great.
Okay, so the pilot thing, the pilot thing, do we have to rescind our previous vote? The twenty twenty that we took?
No, we're authorized, we're just not gonna execute it. Yeah. It didn't require us to, it just authorized it, so.
Uh, you know.
Yeah, we're still authorized.
And this is because, did you, did assessors want this or?
Well, the company is going to use chapter five instead because they changed the.
They changed the law.
Well, the law changed about the, it has to be done, has to be done by January first, Rose won't get in on taxes.
Right, has Rose vetted it, make sure it's, yes, I know the law changed, but, yes, she has it. Okay.
She has actually looked over this and doesn't have any concerns.
So if we don't, if we don't do it, we won't be able to tax it here.
That's right, we need to get it done before January one.
My concern is if we vote against it, thinking that we're installing more solar somewhere.
Yeah, no.
Which, we won't be able to tax what we currently have.
Right. And then we have our four school capital requests, which we covered last week and it's not much, nothing new happened on that and it's, it is what it is. What's the most expensive one is the boiler.
And if Wilbraham rejects one or two, it's moot for us, I mean, you have to pass over.
Well, those were their mood, I mean, yeah. If they pass one and three, we don't have to pass one and three, right?
Right, yeah, right. You know, or if we pass opposite.
Yeah, then we have problems, nothing passes.
Right. Um, I did talk to the assessors today, they're not close on where we are. I know you had a, you know, Cliff also said the same thing. They're still getting the numbers together for new growth, things like that and.
Uh, he said that, I, I saw him today as well, he came in and he said he thinks that we're gonna have an estimate of the tax rate relative to.
Yeah, at the end of the month. All right, so having seen that, we, so what we have done then, is we have removed.
Two.
I don't think we really need motions per se. We don't move things, but.
No, you don't have to do it.
So we are leaving on the animal, because we're gonna take a motion to close the article. We're gonna leave animal control on. We're gonna drop number four and we're gonna drop number eleven. Correct?
Okay.
All right. So with those changes, could I have a motion to close the special town meeting warrant?
Go, second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Mary. Next on the hot list. Don's gonna update us on his strategy.
All right, but, okay, basically, the planning committee met, we're gonna be meeting again on the seventeenth, I believe. The superintendent presented a, the results of the survey that was done and that's available through the school committee if you want anyone else to get there.
I couldn't understand part of the talk on the YouTube thing. The survey was done how?
Survey was done, it was sent out to the parents.
Just parents, okay.
And it was on the, it was on the website too. Right, so, and.
Do you think, to that point, do you think the people being surveyed was skewed a bit towards mostly parents?
Yeah.
It should have been, I think that's the point of this one, right?
Was this one, I don't think so, or?
I think that was, that was the point of it, you know? And there's some interesting findings, like, you know, it, I think the most interesting finding is that most of the people aren't opposed to changing the regional agreement in some way, you know, so it's a big thing. They don't quite, can't quite agree on what options and so, basically what's gonna happen is they, they thought maybe they, the school, when it goes to the school committee, the school committee will just have one, make a decision and that'll be the decision that will be reported on.
I did notice though, I don't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry, when you, I'm looking at the survey you had sent us that, you know, you can definitely see the, you know, those favored heavily in Wilbraham side just because of the population that took the survey. But I think if you look at that same percentage of what choice they liked, it followed that same percentage.
Both towns.
Yeah.
So Don, is it, they're saying, okay, if eight goes to Natchog, you then have a choice about six, seventh at either this place or that place.
Right.
That's basically where you're at.
Yeah.
And potentially closing one Wilbraham school or that's pretty much already, you're leaning that way already.
Potentially closing one Wilbraham school or, you know, or Thornton River, just depending on how it goes.
Yeah.
And also there's, was considerable of moving the entire pre-K to Green Meadows. That's the Wilbraham kids too. And the Wilbraham parents were initially, that survey were initially opposed to half day, but if it was full day, they were comfortable with that.
I think that was the big thing we found during the strategic planning sessions that most of the parents wanted full day pre-K.
Yeah.
And I think if that was the case, I mean, they don't want to keep traveling back and forth for a half day like you're saying, but for a full day, I think it'd make a big difference.
Make a big difference for a lot of people. The other thing he went over was that they submitted the current agreement to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and they've made some recommendations that.
Is there all the little bullet points here?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Forty minutes of that.
Yeah, but most of them are just technical changes because of the new laws and wording and stuff like that. They made no, right, they made no decision of whether you should go eight, you know, what to do with the schools.
Well, I did, yeah, but there was a conversation, again, tough to pick up, about the composition of the school committee. And I was, you know, that's pretty much state law. We right now, and people have talked about this, the two options you have are either by representation by population or district wide elections, which would, to me, not be good for Hammond.
Right.
Because we're so over.
Right, and, but the state law is that they, you're supposed to review the populations, the difference, and see if there's any change every five years.
Right.
They don't, they don't expect there to be any changes, so it'd still be five and two.
Like I said, unfortunate, I think is if you win district wide with elections, you have a chance of seven zero.
Yeah, yeah.
Or other populations.
Right.
And then the other, the other thing that they found out is that they've been electing their. And then, uh, the other, the other thing that they found out is that they've been electing their chairman wrong all these years.
I saw that, yeah.
Oh, really?
Years, years.
It's supposed to be by ballot.
Secret, by written ballot.
Oh, a secret ballot, it's, they do it, you know, like we do, you raise your hand, you know? So they're going through all those, uh, and their town council's looking at those as well. And that would be the school committee council. So that's kind of the update, we're gonna be on the seventeenth. Then there was a big discussion about when this can get done. And they thought that by, that everything would have to be done by January first to have it for September of twenty-twenty-four. And I said, I, you know, you, we're, we're having a special town meeting in a month, now you're talking November, we can't fit another special town meeting in on a subject like this during the holidays. And, and I think I persuaded them that they really need to go to the annual town meeting where there's more people than...
I looked up, the last time we had a second special town meeting was Minutog. And we had a February town meeting at one point to talk just Minutog. And I think that was even when we talked about the overflow in the gym, we're gonna have, like, Dr. Burgess, the whole thing, and it was... But it's pretty unusual, you have a second.
Yeah, and so I don't...
But do you think that would help your timeline, though, if you did in the, uh, early?
If we go in, if we go in annual town meeting, is that enough time?
Right.
Well, if you do, if you do an annual town meeting, they can't get it done by September twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
Because they, because, you know, they said, because then we're precluded, until we decide, we can't hire people for moving, contracting, do any construction we need to do, and some of the...
So is February out of sight?
No, I think the school committee might decide to do that anyhow, but...
And that would give you enough time on the...
But they gotta, but they gotta know the, you know, the, the downside, and, you know, you know, you wanna get, I think something like this would fill the hall, but, uh...
Right now, they're reading the tea leaves, and they're gonna go south to work, you know?
So that's where we're standing, so we're meeting again on the seventeenth, and we're gonna push this off the school committee pretty soon, so. Oh, and they, and then a group of them are going to, uh, visit schools on the Cape, there's three high schools on the Cape that have eighth grade with the twelfth grade.
Yeah, Superintendent Provost was talking about that.
Yeah, Barnstable, Dennis, and, um, and the one in Harwich have, 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 have had the eighth grade with the twelfth grades for years, so.
That guy from the retirement board has a place there you can stay.
He can stay at his house. Give him a call, I'm sure he'll take your call.
You guys are best friends, right?
Yeah, yeah, so that's what they're up to, that's the update on that one.
Great, thank you, Don. All right, EV charging update.
Okay, uh, here are the potential sites. Uh, Senior Center, Police Department. I did talk to Mark briefly about that green space in between the Police Department and the Senior Center. We agreed that that's not going to be practical. And something, I think, has changed recently. There are enough cars around now that these charging, uh, stations sometimes are completely filled. The first time, I was running around a lot last week, for the first time ever, I went up to the level-three chargers off of Oil Drive in Tiptree. Not only were the four ports used, two cars were waiting in line. And so, I think, in thinking of a place to do this, we have to think that eventually, you may have a couple of cars that wanna sit and wait in line. And certainly, that green space that I thought might work, will not work, because you don't want, you don't want cars stacked up along Summers Road. I also talked to, uh, the owners of Mountain View, and they're going to give me a response. I talked to, to, uh, Billy, and I, he said, let me talk to my wife, and we'll talk it over. She called me later on and said, we're gonna think this over and get back to you. So, we don't have a definite site, but my guess is it's gonna come down to either the Senior Center or...
Well, can we, what about the mini mall?
Well, uh, in discussions there, uh, I think the one place that would make sense would be between the restaurant, La Cucina, and Summers Road, you know, around the back, there are spaces there. It would be less disruptive.
Where?
Between the restaurants
Yeah.
and the road. The parking wraps around, wraps around, and there are spaces that are rarely occupied, behind there.
At La Cucina?
Yes, yes. I went back there and took a look, and I thought it would be a good location. Uh, it would not disrupt parking in the main part of the lot.
Here's a bar, entrance, right?
I've never seen...
What's that?
There are the entrance of a bar.
The kitchen side or the bar side?
I've never seen it.
I don't know where the entrance to the bar is.
It's on Allen Street?
Uh, yes.
And all the cars lined up along the front there? I've never seen that empty.
Well, it would be...
And that's usually where it floods, too.
It would be the entrance, where the entrance to the bar is. And the, I mean, the, the attraction there is that they could be seen from the highway. But, I don't know.
I always...
Every time I discuss that...
Better off, wasn't at the store across the, you know, they could walk down Mini Mall from there, and...
Well, I was, I was thinking about the, in, in the mini mall, if you go past the Dunkin' Dona drive-in, drive-in through, there's a, like a parking area where the employees park, or stuff like that. Right near the septic, where, where the...
Yeah, where they, they just paved over last year, or two years ago. That would be prime back there, I think.
But it also goes back to my point before, you need to check that with Wendell in terms of, like, they have a parking usage. And if you're gonna restrict parking by having some dedicated spaces, you may throw off the equation for the businesses, because there's a use thing.
Yes.
And that was why I suggested, hey, look, if you use the ones on, in Mountain View, they still have access to the mall.
I don't, I still don't get that, I don't get the Mountain View one. I don't think there's any room in there for that.
Half the year, there is tons of them.
But when, when it's busy during the summer, you can't get in there.
Mm-hmm, we also can't get in the mini mall at some point. That's why, do we, I mean, church?
That's what I was thinking, if, if we do the church, I, we'd have to check with council to see if we have any church, church, state first amendment issues, spending money on church-owned property.
What about Reddicker, do we, we contact the back corner of Reddicker?
I did contact him also.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I left a voice message, he has not called me back. So that might, that might be the best place. Uh, that depends on the conversation we're going to have.
Can we, but, will we be able to get the incentives, the free money, if we go onto?
Yes, not Town Land.
Not Town Land.
It's changed. It used to be, the rule was, you had to, you had to put it on public property. Not now, no, I've checked, I've checked on that. You can put it someplace that is not public property. Uh, Reddicker, the only disadvantage of Reddicker is, and he's got plenty of room, I, I doubt that, that parking lot ever fills up. I drove in there to take a look at it, I think it would work really well. You wouldn't see it from the highway, but what happens now is that you, you, you can plug in chargers, and they'll take you, and the GPS will take you right in there.
So here's another thought. What about Gharish Park? I mean, I see some cars there rarely, driving down Main Street. But you, you have two spots on either side, I mean, I don't know, would encourage somebody to come and park, sit down, read a book for a little while? And then it's town front. Go fishing, go hiking on trails, hike Hamden, what, what?
The other parking lot that's never full is the Harvers store.
Right.
Yeah. And then they could park there, walk down to the park, till, till...
But we're also talking about availability of, of electric, too.
Right.
I think Main Street, I mean, that's where the line should be coming down from, because they have to pay for the interconnect. So where's this, the line coming from the solar field? That's when the upgrade, they put three phase downs.
So here's another thought. What about Cumbes? If we can talk about CPC funding for taking possession, we're not using it for anything other than parking, we won't need Sept Day.
I think it'd be a great idea, but we have to act relatively soon, or, or the money will go to somebody else.
Right, yeah.
Really?
Well, let me ask you this. I know they've got it for sale, how much are they asking for Carmel Parks? You got Realtor sign out, what are they asking?
Wendell said you can get it for a buck.
I see it, my point is that, like Craig makes a good point, but the, the charging station's gonna be a revenue generator. Say they're asking, you know, shoot, they're trying to give it away for ten thousand dollars, who knows, whatever. Right, you're gonna make money on that, you bought it for the Hamden charging station place. And you're funding it, basically, through revenues from charging.
And then you can still walk down to the library, you could walk down to the...
Hike Hamden, and stuff like that, yeah.
Go hiking.
What I like about, uh, you know, like, Senior Center or Police, you could, then you get some, some revenue over and above any kind of maintenance expenses, and you could dedicate it to some kind of program.
No, I do like Craig's thought about Cumbes, 'cause, I mean, Park is right there, you know, Main Street's about the best walking area, I see plenty of people walking around.
You have the access to a restaurant that's right on the sidewalk, right?
Yes, well, see, that, one of the patterns that seems to be emerging, Big Y, for example, although not the one in Long Meadow, and not the one, uh, not the other one, is that businesses that cater to the public, like grocery stores, are putting in these chargers as an incentive, come in, park your car, put, plug it in the charger, and go in and shop. And your tendency, the tendency would be to stay longer.
Maybe it's our revitalization on Main Street.
Uh, I think we'd have to act quickly on, on, well, I'll check it out, I mean, it's very interesting.
Yeah, right. Like I say, you know...
We just closed the warrant, but, for CPC funding.
Could we open, could we open it?
It's actually pretty rare we put the actual things in CPC in the warrant. Basically, you shell your, you know, motion or whatever. All right. Yeah, I hate to say, find out what they, like, you'll hear back from Reddicker.
Yes.
Find out what...
I'm gonna hear back from Mountain View.
Mountain View here.
And we can check into Gharish Park and, and Cumbes.
I think, let's, I think we should prioritize that Carmel Park idea, because...
Would we, do you anticipate we'd have to do the demo first?
No. I mean, question is how, where are they gonna house, you know, the equipment or whatever? I mean, you're only talking to the...
Would be closer to the, to the Main Street than it would be towards the back, you wouldn't have to do the demo.
I mean, you only got spaces, what'd you say, is it six charging stations or four?
There'd be two stations, each station would have two ports each.
So it's four?
Yes.
You can easily fit four cars in the front.
Parking spaces.
Right, so you don't need to take the building down and fit four cars, right, yeah.
No.
Okay.
And that's just, then I sort of get rid of the building and clean it up a little bit.
Oh, I understand, but I mean, right now...
Wasn't, but there was a plan a while ago to, somebody had volunteered to demolish that building.
Well, that's the thing, when Rick and his committee, they had Charlie Armette, I believe, volunteered to take the building down.
And they even had a, a, a plan for a little bridge over the San Tico, right?
That surprises me. With, with all the luck we have with precious labor, that would go that easy.
Well, that's...
Okay. You got the duck. Don, you have a, a policy you wanted to bring forward?
Yeah, the, for filling vacancies, like, the boards are commissioned. You know, so, basically, it just follows what the law is. First part, I guess, for notification, you know, it has to be written notification to the, to the, to the town clerk who notifies the, the board thing, and the other one is outlined in sex, chapter forty-one, section eleven. And this is prompted by, you know, our necessity to have to cancel last week, really, you know? So, this is it to look at, we can discuss it next time, we give you some time to look it over.
Yeah, the only one I don't, and I quickly looked at it, the chapter forty-one, section eleven. But it really doesn't say the board selectman does the stuff. The board selectman calls the meeting, and you made a good point about that, that we should host the, the joint meeting, things like that. But, and I did talk to town administrators in a couple of the towns, they typically allow the boards to do the notification of a vacancy, and encourage people to apply to those boards. So it's like, rather than go to selectman, then they forward it to that board, they just go straight to the board and say, hey, I'd like to be on the library committee, I'd like to be on the, this elected committee. And then we can have a discussion about the interview process and stuff like that after that, and I know you've had concerns about, you know, how that's handled. So let's, uh, put this back on for next week, and we'll read this over, do some research. Great. Uh, correspondence. Lauren, did you get any mail this week?
No.
All right, then. The selectmen reports, Don, you reported on the planning already. Craig, anything on fiber or water at this point?
Um, I haven't heard anything on water, John, you got anything to add about water district stuff?
Nothing.
Nothing, nothing new?
Did the new installation, everything's great?
I'm just still waiting for Ty and Bon to give us a fifty, fifty percent report.
Then, um, we are meeting tomorrow with Ping, as I mentioned earlier, we'll inspect the Beaver, the Beaver Solutions.
Excellent. Um, are you doing site visits?
We're meeting on Carmody.
Right, so you'll have drone coverage?
I mean, I can bring the drone.
That'd be great, yeah. Last thing, no, we did talk about that with Mark before, because some of that stuff is on private property, and I don't know if that's backed up and stuff.
We have authorization, though, now, because of border health emergency.
Oh, I know, but I mean, just to see it from above, like, how it's spread, I think, one of the guys said it is covered a huge, one of the fans said, like, a nature retail.
Just for reference, I was driving down there this weekend after the rainstorm, and water was, like, within five feet of roadside in Carmody, and there was houses all along that road that were pumping out their basements, there was just...
And that's not good-looking water, either.
No, but, you, the water table's so high that, like they were saying, it's, it's flooded bad.
Okay, uh, meetings coming up, obviously, for planning. Senior Center reported last week, we're still with the, uh, building committee, we have another meeting scheduled. And town administrator report.
Oh, um, sorry, I am meeting with the Fiber Optic Committee tomorrow, and we're gonna come up with a date for the next community session before town meeting, sorry.
Uh, the dangerous dog, I did speak with the ACO today. She said to me that the dog is confined, and that there is an appeal to Palmer District Court that's been filed.
So the first appeal was more on process, which they validated, we went through the process correctly. And now this next appeal is on merits, basically? As they're right, as Don encouraged them, go through your rights. Okay, you have...
MVP, new grant for two-hundred-seventy-four thousand is signed, sealed, and returned. Uh, I spent, uh, part of my time this week on the motions and updating the warrant on fiber. I think I mentioned to you earlier that I've been in touch with, uh, someone who is a key person in this whole area in Massachusetts, and, uh, he has connected me with the right person in the, in BI, and gonna try and move ahead with, uh, some funding there to subsidize what we're doing. Hamden did host a luncheon for regional administrators that I thought was very useful. And I hope it can continue, because just talking about activities in each town, you find out what they're doing, you don't have to reinvent the wheel yourself. And, and I find them very useful, I found them very useful in Norfolk County when I was there, I found them very useful in Essence County. And we should be doing it, we should be doing it here.
We actually talked about that at the regional selectmen's meeting, and when I was talking to Nick Barrow today, I said, what happened to the idea about the, uh, uh, chairs of the boards getting together? He said he thought Terry had reached out, but I said, no, I hadn't heard from her, so. He was gonna bring it up at their meeting tonight, this is something that, you know, I think orderly, and Don, that would be, you know, your gig, obviously, next year. But I think it's, I, I think chairs of the boards have different, I don't wanna say viewpoints, but that's kind of the thing than the town administrator managers do. Because we're more involved with the residents than you all are. We have a different perception, heck, you know, we see them on a daily basis in town things, so our viewpoint might be different than the, you know, the town administrator, the town manager, the town, uh, you know...
I think, I think selectmen understand the constraints a little bit better than administrators do, in general.
I think we get it more than, no, no, I'm saying, they have, there's no hesitation, Don, to come up and express to us, right?
No.
No, no, Craig, do you get that on occasion?
Well, yeah.
So you don't shop in town anymore, right?
That's why, that's why I started working at this guy's.
Now, just people stop at your house.
Really, really? I've had that before, too, people stop at your house, and like, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Uh, Cemetery Commission did a meet on the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
And, uh, let's see, uh, we're looking at the job description and operations coordinator situation, and lastly, I do have someone who has offered to help reestablish the capital, capital... And lastly, I do have someone who has offered to help reestablish the capital, capital improvement committee. We've had complaints, and they're not new, that we're doing one-time purchases and capital sometimes ad hoc. And I think it would make more sense if we had two kinds of plans to deal with what I call one-time purchases. The big ticket capital items, and there's not much there right now. We know what those projects are, and I don't know that there's a big role for the capital committee. However, the one-time purchases that are not quite at the level of capital, that would be funded either from free cash or put into the operating budget. That kind of list, I think, would be valuable to have, so that we would say to the police chief, all right, put the rifles on the list, put, put the revolvers on the list if that's what you need.
I don't know, we talked about that before, and I think when we had the capital committee, you would talk to Thad and Dick Patello. You know, they said there had to be a cutoff. You know, you can't be out there, the mower for the highway department shouldn't be a capital thing. It's, it's part of the stuff that you do business, basically. But when you look at the point that, yeah, we bought a dump truck in the spring, $250,000. We're buying a fire truck, although technically, the money we're, we're spending. But the value of it is over that threshold, you know?
Well, that's another thing, I mean, the town.
Oh, sorry, the tracker, the highway tracker, clearly, yeah.
Town's been financially able.
Maybe even the AEDs, AEDs, 25 grand on AEDs.
Yeah, well, the town's been financially able to buy some things that go above. I mean, usually, 50,000 is a capital cutoff. Above 50 is considered capital. But the town has been fortunate to be able to purchase with cash some of these items that are well above the 50,000 threshold. But we ought to have a list.
Yeah.
What about something as simple as like asset management too? Because there's a lot of little things that don't fall under capital.
Yeah.
That are not tracked, that we could spend capital on that we inadvertently don't know about.
And that's, it seems to me that eventually you're gonna get to some kind of facilities management type of person. And that's certainly one of those responsibilities, to know about those assets and know about the useful life of those assets. Come up with a list and, and play it out five or 10 years or, or more.
Not to beat a dead horse, but just in the topic of asset management, at the transfer station last week, there was an alarm going off. And we were trying to figure out what it was. It ended up being an old repeater system that nobody had any knowledge of or knew about. Been up there since 99. You know, asset management, it was like, who, who is this? Why is it still here? We couldn't figure that out. Just little, little things.
That's, that's the reward.
Not connected to anybody, right?
No, no, it's not connected to anything. It was actually connected to a phone line that wasn't in use anymore.
Which reminds me.
Yeah.
Do we have a phone up there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you, Don.
Let's do it, June.
Thank you.
Don made the motion this week, Lauren. Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all.
Thank you. I'm not opposed to beating dead horses. It's better than beating live horses.
Did you turn off the recording before you did that? Yeah, it's like, I mean, this guy.